Library Lawn Care Service. Under New Business, please. And then, just let me know when you guys are done with that. And between 11:00 and 12:00, 11:00 will make it 11:00 A. Motion to go into closed session regarding privileged and confidential attorney-client And are there any other additions or deletions, please?
None for me.
Motion, please.
I have motion to approve the meeting agenda for April 3rd.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Is everybody here okay?
Yep.
Yep, I guess. Okay, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes as presented. Support.
Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Clerk Candell. There are discussion or questions? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Public announcements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Dan Hartwig. This is about the special meeting we had to hire Mr. Kason. I just went back and I looked at the motion that was made to hire Mr. Kason. And I have a problem with this. We talked about him hiring him for 22.5 hours a week. We've got a minimum here, which means how high, how many hours can he get in? Because, and my thoughts that night, that that was what he was gonna work and that was it. But this minimum of 22.5 was never spoken about till obviously when the motion was made to hire him. So does he have a cap in hours?
He doesn't. My thoughts-
I think that's totally wrong.
Well, he doesn't want to work anymore than those hours. That's, that was his maximum amount.
But is he going to hold that, hold himself to that, or?
He doesn't want to work anymore. That's why he wanted this, this opportunity here with us. He doesn't want, he doesn't want to work a lot of hours, and that's why it fit for us.
Okay, but I just questioned the word minimum in that motion. And I just don't want to come up all of a sudden, oh, he's working.
Sir, I do prefer a jam fit. You want him to work a, work a maximum of 22?
And actually, and to go back on that, actually his minimum could be less than in our discussion during that meeting. We said if we didn't have anything going on, he just wasn't gonna work.
I understand that.
But we wanted to say a maximum of 22.
I would, I would feel more comfortable with that myself. But I think saying minimum gives him carte blanche to-
Yeah, no, that's not the case.
Whether he wants to work or not, that's still carte blanche to work whatever hours he wants to work.
There could be, and not, not to speak out of turn, there could be times, and I'm asking Mr. Tronley at this time, where he could, it might go over depending on the circumstance, but I'm sure Steve, we will adjust his hours, and I don't know.
And what we plan on doing is if he has a lot of meetings scheduled, that just means he's gonna work less here and use those meetings to apply to his time.
And you did say that. You did say if he has meetings, that's going to include in his-
Correct.
-22.5 hours per week.
Correct.
Not necessarily go over that, but I do have a problem with that.
What I, what I contribute at this time is that we do not in any way, shape, or form plan on going over those hours a week with Mr. Kason, nor is his impression of going over that many hours.
But couldn't that be changed?
Pardon?
Can it be changed, the maximum?
I believe we can. I believe we can, but it's not on the agenda. We can make it part of the agenda that will make you feel better.
I don't know about the rest of the township people that are here, but I would feel more comfortable. I mean, I'm just one person.
Sure.
I think this makes a big difference in wording.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Chief.
Just a quick public announcement. Bay River Medical Physicians Healthcare Network opened for business today at 9:00 a.m. down on 26 Mile Road behind Tim Hortons, so just wanted to let everybody know.
Great, thank you. Mr. White.
Are we still under public comment?
Yep.
Yes, sir. It's actually a public announcement type situation.
Just one, one quick item for the board. On July the, the sixth, the American Red Cross would like to use our facility for a blood drive from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. They've done this, they've done this the last couple of years, so as long as there is no conflicting meetings, if staff can check the, Jeanette maybe can let me know for sure, and we'll go ahead and schedule a blood drive for that date.
Thank you, sir. Other public announcements? Public comment? Yes, sir.
Really easy one. Did I look into it a little bit?
I have looked into it a little bit.
We, we both looked into it a little bit. We're still, we're still talking about it. We haven't made any final decisions yet.
I do have a couple of questions I'll need to ask you too, and, and about usage, about how many people you think would be utilizing it and things of that-
Do you have a demonstration?
No, sir, not at this time.
Well, we're not right here in this room.
No, I just, like, if you have an idea of how many people do you think this would impact and things of that nature, that would-
I gotta be honest with you, I have no idea because we don't have a facility. And those of us that do play are going to Romeo, Washington, St. Clair Shores, Romeo and Romeo Boulevard. If you hope one year, we might have more of us playing. This lady down the street, I know, well, she's playing with, you know.
Sure.
It's just, it's a different situation. Yeah, there is one that could be discussed about it. I mean, like, you know, you could even make it practically self-pay for itself, because some of the places you go, they're, they're charging. And then there's other places you go, they only charge 50 cents.
Yeah. Well, you know, that's part of the discussion we can have with you, definitely. If you'd like to come in, be happy to sit down and talk about some of these things with you. We'll need that information.
I'd be willing to join that meeting, Mr. Tronley, maybe.
Especially if it's Wednesday. Because I play pickleball the rest of the time.
Be happy to sit down with you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you. Other public comment? Other public comment? Consent agenda.
All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board or public soul requests it prior to the meeting, to which event the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Nine below. Approval of the consent agenda should be by a majority roll call vote to those present in voting. I would like to pull out the super agent report to discuss a meeting time with the Board. That's the only thing I'd like to pull out is letter J at this time under letter eight. All other items can be in the part of the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Ron, what'd you want to do?
Pull out my report just to discuss a meeting with everybody.
Do we want to talk bills?
Sure.
Okay. We have prepaid in the amount of $97,483.72. We have current bills listed in the amount of $223,128.03 for a total bills of $320,611.75.
Thank you.
Make a motion we accept the consent agenda as read.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Deputy Clerk roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes. And a motion regarding the bills, please.
I make a motion we approve the bills as presented.
I second.
In the amount of $320,611.75.
Sorry about that. I second.
Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. Deputy Clerk roll call on that too, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Letter eight, items removed from consent agenda, letter J, super agent report. I just would like to bring it to everybody's attention, with the hiring of Mr. Kason, one of the first initiatives he'd like to do is set a meeting date with not only the Board, but the Planning Commission and the ZBA to try to get everybody on the same page on a plan of action to go forward with things that we need to accomplish, making sure that Mr. Kason addresses any and all questions by any of the Board members, Planning Commission members, or ZBA members. He would like to do that prior to the Planning Commission meeting, so if we want to do it like a piggyback meeting where we do that first, I know I've discussed it with a couple of you, if people would like to stay, if it's something that we could do, just getting a couple pizzas or pop, get everybody together, then have the meeting, let them stay for the next meeting also, to kind of kill two birds with one stone, that's fine by me, whatever, whatever the Board prefers.
I don't have a problem with that idea, but top of the list is repair.
Yeah, it's the first time all three, three would be together too, and I, I think it's far overdue. We should, we should have done this before. This'll be good. So if anybody has any dates or any suggestions, we can talk about it at a later date, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention at this time. Do, we can just do it for informational purposes now, listening, if somebody wants to suggest a time or date. I can just have Jeanette put out some, some times and we can answer by email. Sound good?
That's fine. I'm, I'm willing to do it. I, I'm hopeful, or it does.
Well, if you want, we could do a motion to authorize that meeting, and then we'll just set, have it subject to satisfactory time and date.
The 24th, this is the Planning Commission meeting. If you wanted to do it then.
The next Planning Commission meeting is the 24th.
Okay.
So if you wanted to do-
Prior to that, prior to that, that sounds good to me.
Planning Commission's at 7:30, we'll do it prior to that at-
Six.
Six.
Hour and a half, that should be sufficient time for everybody, and give the Planning Commission time to get ready for their meeting. So, 24th at six o'clock. We'll have a, deputy supervisor get a count of the titties, and then we'll just have a little, little something to eat, pizza or pop or something like that. Any other questions? Get a motion, please.
I motion we have a CBA, Planning Commission, and Board of Trustees meeting at six o'clock for 24th, before Planning Commission meeting at 7:30.
Mr. Kason, right.
You support that? Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number 10, New Business. DPW seasonal personnel hire request.
Good evening. As you may recall, last month, I asked for approval to advertise for a seasonal position for the year. At the last moment, we did get one applicant for the position. I was able to interview the person today, as well as some of the public officials that were in the building at the time, were able to meet the gentleman. His name is John Alowski, he's, he's here tonight to answer any questions if there may be, but by speaking with him, he's getting ready to graduate from Richmond High School next month in Maine. He's a, he's a resident of the Township. Speaking about his studies and interests, sounds like he would be a very good fit for this position, given the AIS equipment program that he's been involved in, the Autotech program at Panacol, and then just his general interest in, in working on equipment and running equipment. Work around the family farm, he's already operated most of the equipment that we use on a daily basis, so I think he would be a very good fit for this position. He, he understands what the job is as far as paid hours per week, and of course, what he'd be doing. So at this time, I would make a recommendation to the Board that we hire John Alowski for the seasonal position.
I will make a motion that we hire John Alowski as the seasonal DPW personnel.
I'll second.
Right. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, John.
Congratulations, John.
Letter B, Code Officials Conference of Michigan Spring Conference Request. Mr. Lemieux submitted this. You go up there, Jeanette, but I think it's pretty self-explan-
Well, the total cost is $165 and 40 for membership. This is something, this is something we've paid in the past, I take it?
Correct. Okay. Yes, they have it. Other questions?
I'll make a motion we approve Dennis Lemieux to go to the Code Officials Conference of Michigan.
Second.
I second.
Mrs. Candell. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Letter C, 2017 Limestone Application Program. At this time, Cam, if you want to come back up there, we're basically still identifying problem areas we have. Community that has reached out to us and are exploring another opportunity for shared costs with communities to lessen our, our cost of the total project, but we're still trying to identify exactly one mile, I believe, correct, that we went on?
That is correct. You know, typical fashion in all the years we've been doing this program, I make a point to drive every road to have a clear understanding of what the current status is. Since the two inches of rain we got last week, they're all looking really special right now. But like you had mentioned, we have a couple opportunities where we can utilize some shared costs through some other communities. We haven't gotten total commitments on all of those yet because of timing of other Board meetings and so forth, but if we can, you know, we know we're gonna use three miles somewheres, so if we can get the approval to move forward with the three miles, you know, as quickly as I can identify those, we'll move forward on it.
And if anybody would ever want to, we keep copies here. We spend quite some time, we've created a road improvement map, and we show every application of limestone from point A to point B on every road, when it was applied, so we have an ongoing map of what roads haven't had anything in a long time, and which ones were done, so we can keep track of everything, so any resident can come and, and check this out at any time too, so.
Yeah, it's a very valuable tool. It not only shows the years that the applications in what area, but it also shows current traffic counts for each road in what area, bridge replacements or bridges that are in need of repair, so it's a very valuable tool we use every year when we determine that.
What we try to do is by the number of residents, but most importantly, our emergency services get priority, and that's why we have the DPW superintendent, the fire chief, and the EMS chief pretty much dictate to us where's the best application for this project. So appreciate you guys' work on that. We want to get approval for the three miles basically at this time.
Right. We know we're gonna use at least three miles. You know, we've identified some areas thus far, but because of the cost sharing, we-
We just have it subject to Cam identifying the three miles for us, but if we have authorization, we can tell the county we are gonna do, they, they need to know we're gonna do the three miles, and then we'll just have Cam submit the three miles if that's all right with everybody.
And obviously, the Board would know, as well as the fire chief and the EMS director, what three miles that would be before it's done.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, Cam, does the cost per ton go up or down every year very much? I mean, how does that hang?
It stays pretty consistent. I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't track it that closely. Because it's, you know, because the cost sharing is so minimal on our part-
Right.
I, I don't really question it, to be honest with you.
I was just curious, it's not, you know.
It is, because of our proximity, our cost per ton is one of the lowest compared to some of, some of the other communities that are further out.
And sure, everybody knows, on, on these applications, the county bears 90% of the cost. We only bear 10% of cost on these applications, so we get three miles at 10%, basically. So it's a great program for us, and that's the max amount. Before, it was only two miles. We asked for additional mileage, because when you can knock out a road for 10%, we were all over it. So we got an additional mile out of them, and we've been able to obtain that additional mile ever since that was instituted, and it's a great bang for our buck to knock out a whole mile of the road for only 10% cost, so.
Thanks, Cam.
Need a motion, please.
I make a motion we approve the, the application of limestone as read.
Three miles.
Three miles.
I'll second.
Oh, second? Thank you. Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter D, Lennox Township Library Lawn Care Service. Once again, we received the letter from the Lennox Township Library. They would like, like us to provide the same service that we have in the past, correct?
Correct. I did speak with, with Ms. Knowles this afternoon, and I, this time, I don't see any need to change any of the parameters of the, of the agreement. The only thing I did recommend to her is, because it seems like it comes up so quickly every time, between the lawn and the snow, I told her to just include both on the next time if she-
That makes perfect sense. To include both. And just so everybody's aware too, it is a separate entity from the Township. It has its own governing body. They contract services through us, so it's a total, total separate entity.
Will that be at the same amount as last year, Cam?
Correct.
Which was 650?
I believe it was 650. And I believe the, the stone, I believe the stone and grass are the same amount.
I looked it up. According to last year's minutes, it's 650, so.
Other questions?
I make a motion we approve the lawn service and clear grass cookies for the, for the Lennox Township Library as, as done in the past.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Public comment? Yes, sir. Could you, could you come in?
This is more of a concern and a question, because I don't really know if we have anything in place or not. When we had the power outage, was there any Lennox Township warming centers or anything?
I'm sorry, did you, was there any?
We had the power outages, okay. Like other communities had warming centers, they provided dry ice and even places to stay because if your power was out, you didn't have any heat. I was just wondering if there's anything that was ever in-
Mr. White, would you like to address that?
In the Township.
Yes, sir. So a couple things occurred during the, during the power outage, but basically, both the County Dispatch Center and DTE had my cell phone number that was available all weekend that had we had any residents that were in need of either the ability to be warmed or dry ice or things of that nature. They, they called our emergency dispatch centers. I would have been notified, and between the EMS and Fire Department, we would have made arrangements to take care of that. A lot of years ago, and Chief and I have both done this a very long time, we used to get very aggressive with opening shelters and other things, and what we found in this area is, one, our residents tend to be very self-sufficient, a lot of camp generators and things of that nature, and those that don't tend to have family near enough by that they go stay with them, so you can expend a lot of resources in opening a shelter, because you have to staff it with people, so you can spend a lot of resources opening a shelter that frankly, in the past, people just have not shown up at. So instead of, you know, opening a shelter that may not have gotten used, we kind of said, we're here, we're available, and if we receive calls of anybody in need, you know, we'll, we'll certainly make sure they have a warm place to stay, or, or if we can keep their food cold or whatever the case is. We did not receive any calls either in Lennox or Richmond Township during, during the power outage.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. But just a comment to that, I, I understand it, I was self-sufficient even though my power was out, but there's still gonna always be those that aren't gonna be there, especially some of the elderly that can't get out and things like that. And maybe this should almost be put out as a document to let them know that they can call the EMS?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I got on the subject?
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Going back to the, Mr. Kason, with the minimum hours, did you say they had to be put on the agenda?
I believe we have put it on the agenda and addressed it.
Okay, will that be for next month, or how is that done?
We can do it next month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir. On that note, with emergency shelters, New Haven Community Schools has a contract with American Red Cross, maybe not during a power failure, but our gyms at Endeavor, the high school, and Clark Street, the, I'll talk to Mr. White about this, but we have a contract there for like a tornado disaster, that would be like a place where you'd have costs of people needed to sleep. We do have that contract with the American Red Cross at New Haven Schools, and that would apply to these area residents too. Just FYI, and I can get more information on that if you guys want it, anybody that needs it.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Any other comments? Get a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the agenda, there was a thing in there regarding the discussion, I think what you meant, drive-through window in?
even the drive through windowing, and I don't remember hearing you discuss that.
We removed it from the agenda.
Okay, I came in later, didn't I? Um, I have a couple comments on it, I was here two months ago when you discussed it.
Could you, could you pull the mic up, sir, please? Thank you.
And I was just thinking in regard to that, the amount of money it would cost for that window seems like, uh, a pretty extravagant expense for what it would serve. Um, my thoughts are just that if you really wanna deal with, uh, the senior citizens and help people out in the community, you should find a program that would help them all year round, not just basically two days out of the year when they have to pay their spring and their fall property taxes. Um, I'm thinking there's already mechanisms in place, I pay my taxes at the, the bank because it's convenient for me, um, and I just think that, uh, money could probably be better spent and do people more good than that particular program.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, and just to go back on that, that's a great comment to make, we were exhausting every idea we possibly could, and that's one of the reasons too we have this planner coming on board. Um, they are so stringent with the rules and regulations regarding this money now, and specifically it has to be for something, uh, it's, it's almost impossible to use it, and it reverts back to the county. So, one of our main things we all had talked about was a group was, first and foremost, we wanted restrooms, uh, for the, for the part that seniors could utilize, uh, for the majority of the year, um, things of that nature that would get used, but it's been so difficult trying to navigate through the county to use these funds, so hopefully with this professional coming on board, he's gonna help us find a way to utilize that money so we don't lose it for things like you're saying that will impact more often and more use. So, thank you for that comment. Anyone else? I don't care, any motion?
I make a motion to go into closed session. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss privilege and confidential attorney-client communications at 7:02.
Motion by Treasurer Honald, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honald?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
We go on back into open session at 7:45. Second.
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Honald. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion passes.
I make a motion that we adjourn at 7:46. Second.
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Honald. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.